Please rise for the collective allegiance.
For the allegiance of the United States of America and to the Republic of America, with all the nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And as always, I will ask that people mute their electronic devices so that we can proceed undisturbed. And I believe we have a forum. Madam Clerk, can you confirm a forum?
I confirm the presence of the forum.
And we have an agenda that has been circulated. I'm going to make one change in that agenda, and that is, as we usually do when we have a swearing in of a new firefighter or a police officer, we move that to the top of the agenda. So with that, I'm just going to begin by saying, as I was putting together the schedule for this year, I have to tell you I cringed a little bit when I saw that we would be meeting on 9/11. Twenty-two years ago, actually, three terrorists hijacked airplanes, flew into the Twin Towers in New York and the Pentagon in Arlington, Virginia. I think we can all agree there are just no words that we can say at this time. So all I can do is say, in memory of the 2,977 innocent victims who died in those attacks, I ask that we observe a moment of silence. May they rest in peace and may they never be forgotten. Begin with the minutes of the August 7th, 2023, regular meeting. These minutes were circulated in draft. There have been some changes made. Do I have motion to accept the minutes as change?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye. Oh, wait a minute. I need a motion.
We have the motion.
Okay, all right. So we have a motion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay. Going to begin with Ordinance 2023-45, in ordinance appointing a Glendale volunteer firefighter, establishing a one-year probationary period, and declaring an emergency. Chief, can you tell us a little bit about this new firefighter?
Yes, this is a lady that I'm going to introduce you as Amanda Tittle, and she lives in Cleveland. She is a graduate from Keller High School, but she's also graduated to Xavier University in occupational therapy. She's already certified as a firefighter one in EMT. She teaches at Diamond Oaks and the Inquirer, Inqueen, excuse me, I'm going to say, Inquire program, and enjoys the work. She has three horses that she owns, and she's very active in outdoor activities like hiking. She likes her reading, riding horses, and training them as well. And she wanted to come to Glendale to serve a community that with the betterment of the fire and EMS service at heart. So I want to welcome you to Amanda. She wants to go on to become a paramedic and a flat medic, which is great, and get herself involved in search and rescue, similar to what they do at Red River Gorge. So Amanda is going to be a nice asset for the fire department. She comes trained, and she wants to expand her horizons.
Thank you, Chief. Do I have a motion for this ordinance?
So moved.
Second.
Okay. Any, and a motion dispensed with three reads?
So moved.
Second.
Okay. Any discussion? Okay. Madam Clerk?
For Ordinance 2023-45, to dispense with the three reads, Mr. Bessel.
Aye.
Ms. Duke.
Aye.
Ms. Mosenko.
Aye.
Mr. Baseman.
Aye.
Mr. Kreidler.
Aye.
Ms. Baldridge.
Aye.
For Ordinance 2023-45, Mr. Bessel.
Aye.
Ms. Duke.
Aye.
Ms. Mosenko.
Aye.
Mr. Baseman.
Aye.
Mr. Kreidler.
Aye.
Ms. Baldridge.
Aye.
Thank you.
And now for one of the fun parts of my job, I get to swear in a new firefighter. So I would ask Amanda to please come forward. I think I have this memorized right now, but I'm almost afraid of forgetting one thing. Raise your right hand and repeat after me. Aye. State your name.
Aye, Amanda Tittle.
Do hereby swear.
Do hereby swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the state of Ohio.
And the Constitution of the state of Ohio.
And that I will faithfully.
And that I will faithfully.
And impartially discharge.
And impartially discharge.
The duties of volunteer firefighter for the village of Glendale.
The duties of the volunteer firefighter of the village of Glendale.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Welcome aboard and thank you.
Thank you.
Good job. Congratulations. Congratulations. Welcome. Congratulations. Okay, we turn now to the public comment section of our agenda, and I invite anybody who wishes to do so to come forward and address council. Okay, we'll let it, I guess we can let it clear.
Where do I need to stand? I don't know. Right here. Well, it's good to be back in Glendale.
Would you state your name, please, and where you live?
Well, Stuart Holbauer, also known as Chip, on 380 Albion Avenue. The reason I'm coming here tonight is I wanted to talk about the streetlights. And to me, I'm watching what's going on with the streetlights over the years, and I come back and I see that they're a mess. A bad mess. There's talk of putting solar, there's talk of putting electric. Regardless of whether we do that, they have to be cleaned. I volunteered to be clean, to clean them, and to get a group to clean them. I think, Don, I spoke to you at one point, you may not remember, but you said it's a little more involved. And I've handled $50,000 chandeliers. I think that's involved. These aren't so involved. I would like to talk about pricing. I've got in my pocket here, which I'll give you all, the BTUs per hour that these lights should be burning, 2,500 BTUs.
Chip, just so you understand, you do have a five-minute limit on your talk.
Okay.
I just.
Thank you. Okay. I'm sure I'm going to get the three-minute warning from David at some point. So, yeah, whatever it is. Anyhow, you know, I've got some volunteers. I have some solutions. And I think sometimes deer in headlights is not a solution. I think solutions are coming up with out-of-the-box plans, and I've got an out-of-the-box plan. I've called the village with no returns. So that's why I'm up here stating it. David, I've left messages with you.
We've spoken.
Spencer, we've spoken also. But I've also had Tom tell me he's not allowed to talk to me. I don't know if that was Tom, or coming, he said from you, but I'm not here to accuse anybody, because I don't know the answers to that. I've purchased a globe for across the street, which I saw a lawnmower run into, okay, and break the globe, Bethany's lawnmower. But I also see around our parks a lot of broken globes. That's a problem with these commercial lawnmowers these days. And I think we need an education, you know, to talk to these guys about them. I purchased my glass globe from a company called American Mantle in Illinois, who supplies Boston, for $110, not 260, not 280. And I can get that price down a little if we buy more. The gas emits 45% less CO2 than light bulbs. I have that with me. I can leave with you all. I do have somebody that is willing to pay for planting the cast iron antique poles that have been hit by cars. We can fix the ones that are tilting. We can clean everything. We can come up with some type of screening to keep the animals out of the birds, out of the glass lights. But I think we can fund this. Now, I told the guy I didn't want him to pay for the whole thing, because I think it should be a village effort. And I think I've got some fundraising ideas. But I think, you know, instead of just listening, I need to be heard, you know. And I think that if you guys can hear me, I can help you.
You have about a minute.
Okay, thank you. And I want to help, because I have a very, and sometime I don't have time, but I'll share with you, as a child, something that I have, something with the streetlights, that I think I shared with you, Don, you know, where I drove around with Tut, the police chief, in an incident that I'm not proud of. But he told me all the history about all these. And I think we can also search for more antique cast iron period ones that we can replace. So I'm here. I'm ready to help, and we've got the money. And you guys say you don't have the money, but we got the money. So let's make something happen, and let's, don't harm the charm. That's my saying. In Glendale, we need charm. There's not a lot going for us here other than our charm, guys, you know, and let's keep the house values up. Okay? So I think I made it. David, did I make it in time?
Thank you.
Okay, good. Thank you, guys.
I would suggest that this is something that could rightfully come before the Streets Committee with a proposal that lays things out in the specifics. And we have obviously precedent here with the painting of the lampposts and the painting of the street signs and all that. And so, you know, we can, this is something we can work with.
Can I give this to David?
Yes.
No.
Thank you. Okay.
Okay, we're just going to keep it in the family for a little bit.
Sure.
Cindy Taylor, Laurel Avenue. Okay, I was just at a planning, which one is the one, is it this little one?
That one's the big one.
Oh, the big one? Okay. I was just at the Planning Commission meeting with a client who actually has a contract on 3 Rogan Drive, Chip's property that he's selling. And it's been quite a process through different things to get this closed. We had a closing scheduled for Thursday. We were hoping that we could get that approval given tonight. But the one thing that was, that the Planning Commission said they wanted on the home that wasn't there, there was only one window on one side of the house where the garage was. And so they said if he added a second window, that it would be approved. But that's going to take a couple weeks to get done with the different things. So being the kind of person I am, I drove to Cruthers Pond after the meeting, found two houses that have one window and one smaller window. One is located right next to his lot. If you face it, it's the one to the left, and one across the street, down one. So my question is, why were these two houses approved? And my client's been required to add a second window to the side of his house. I just want to see where the consistency is on that. And I have the pictures if, you know, anyone would like to see them. But his was just voted down because he would only have one window on the side of his house. And I have pictures of two. I don't want to go through everybody's backyard. I just took pictures where I felt comfortable, you know, not being called out. But so, I'm just not quite sure why it was voted down. I don't know.
Okay, I'm afraid the decision was made by the Planning Commission. This is council.
I just want to point out the inconsistency.
We take your questions as rhetorical one, but we can also look into it further if you want to.
It's cost me like $6,000, the incompetency of certain things. We don't know. I know a lot died with what.
Chip, your time is over for speaking.
I still have time. But how do I resolve this and get this taken care of since there's But how do I resolve this and get this taken care of, since there's actually, obviously precedence to only having one window? And one's a very small window.
The only thing I can suggest is that you come in and talk with David, and he can give you your options. But the fact of the matter is, the Planning Commission did take a vote. And the only way it could be overturned is with an appeal to council, or by making them change, getting them to change their minds. Their next meeting is October 2nd, I think?
So, okay, so there's really not a resolution, even though I have pictures?
I'm afraid that's right.
Okay.
Does anybody else wish to address council?
Kevin Parrish, 176 Washington, resident. At your last meeting, I requested the presence of Kevin Bale, Chief Engineer for the Utilities. And I see he is not here. I happened to be looking through my records, which I keep extensively and correctly, and I found a letter from the former solicitor, Ms. Abrams, dated January 3rd, 2019. It addresses, "Public Records Request Dated December 26, 2018. Dear Mr. Parrish, The Village of Glendale has forwarded me your above-referenced public records request to me for response. I reviewed your request and find that it is not a public records request under the Ohio law. In your request, you ask that the village require one of its employees, Kevin Bale, to attend the January 7th, 2019, meeting of the Village of Glendale, Village Council, to give residents an update as to the status of utilities in the Village of Glendale, since he is over that department. The Ohio Public Records Act details how public offices must maintain and retain their records, and how and when persons may inspect or obtain public records. It pertains entirely to public records. The Ohio Public Records Act does not in any way require public offices to present their employees for public presentation for any reason, including at the request of persons not employed by or appointed to the public office. In addition, there is no other law or regulation in Ohio which authorizes your request for Mr. Bale's presence and presentation. The Village of Glendale, like every other public entity in Ohio, has the sole discretion to determine who will provide presentations at village council meetings, and when such presentations will be made." That was 2019, that's four years ago. Fire chief, he's an employee of the village, is he not? And the police chief, he's an employee of the village, is he not? Is he not? And Kevin Bale, for utilities, he's an employee, right? So you're saying that Kevin Bale is exempt from coming and giving a report to residents, even though the agoric, just the devastating water issues that we have here. Doesn't he have a moral obligation to the residents to give them a report? He gives David a monthly report, but David doesn't forward that information to the committee. And he doesn't make it public for residents of what Kevin is saying each month. But I guess that goes to say a lot about this honesty and transparency thing that you started off at the first of the year. We sure do have a lack of it. Also, the C-MO. You have monthly update reports that you send in to the EPA. Why aren't they public, so we can see the status of where you guys are in planning for this infrastructure fixture? It doesn't, doesn't make too much sense. I mean, to me, it doesn't, maybe it makes sense to you guys. Also, there was a spill, August 18th. Mayor, you quoted on social media that there would be updates. It's been three weeks of David posting the weekly newsletters, and there's been no mention of that.
You have about a minute.
What's, what's going on with that? I checked a week after the spill happened with the EPA, and they had no record. That was on the 25th. They had no record of the report. And they got back with me and said that they checked with Hamilton County, and there was no record of that report. But then a report surfaced, but it hasn't been made public yet, because they take up to 30 days, which would be next week. It should be about ready. This is what I'm saying. It seems like you're practicing a double standard with your employees, because evidently in four years, Kevin Bale has not made an appearance. And every month, the police chief and the fire chief come here, and they openly, honestly, and transparently give us an update on what's going on in their department. Now, Kevin Bale has discrepancies in his record-keeping.
Your time has expired.
And I'm surprised about that. This is health and safety that we're talking about, and he doesn't have proper records? It's no surprise that the auditor forced you guys to have some training.
Your time is up.
Have some training this week for record-keeping and your accounting practices.
Does anybody else wish to address council? We will then proceed, there is no old business, we will proceed with new business. Ordinance 2023-46. An ordinance authorizing the village administrator to enter into an agreement with Playground Equipment Services for the purchase of playground equipment and for installation at Summit Park and declaring an emergency. Mr. Lumston, would you give us some background here?
Thank you, Mayor. As council remembers, we have through three different pieces of legislation appropriated funds towards this project. This is the final piece to that, authorizing me to actually sign the agreement to enable ordering the playground equipment. So once this is passed, we'll get it signed. It does exceed $50,000, which is the state requirement for council approval of a contract.
Do I have a motion for the ordinance?
Still moved.
And a motion dispensed with three reads?
Still moved.
I didn't hear a second.
A second.
Oh, sorry, okay. Further discussion? Madam Clerk?
For ordinance 2023-46, to dispense with the three reads, Mr. Bessel.
Aye.
Ms. Duke.
Aye.
Ms. Mosenka.
Aye.
Mr. Basemuth.
Aye.
Mr. Cradler.
Aye.
Ms. Baldridge.
Aye.
For ordinance 2023-46, Mr. Bessel.
Aye.
Ms. Duke.
Aye.
Ms. Mosenka.
Aye.
Mr. Basemuth.
Aye.
Ms., Mr. Cradler.
Aye.
Ms. Baldridge.
Aye.
Thank you.
Motion carried. Ordinance 2023-47. An ordinance authorizing the increase of the 2023 appropriations of the community fund and declaring an emergency. Mr. Lumston, another case.
Thank you, Mayor. The Glendale Gathering of Historic Vehicles Car Show collected about $4,000, a little over $4,000 in proceeds for charitable local causes, Harry Whiting Brown, and a few other local organizations. And this appropriation increases the community fund in order to spend that money and make those donations.
Motion for the ordinance?
Still moved.
Second.
And a motion dispensed with three reads?
Still moved.
Second.
Discussion? Madam Clerk?
For ordinance 2023-47, to dispense with the three reads, Mr. Bessel.
Aye.
Ms. Duke.
Aye.
Ms. Mosenka.
Aye.
Mr. Basemuth.
Aye.
Mr. Cradler.
Aye.
Ms. Baldridge.
Aye.
For ordinance 2023-47, Mr. Bessel.
Aye.
Ms. Duke.
Aye.
Ms. Mosenka.
Aye.
Mr. Basemuth.
Aye.
Mr. Cradler.
Aye.
Ms. Baldridge.
Aye.
Thank you.
Ordinance 2023-48. An ordinance amending Section 150.01 of the Glendale Codified Ordinances, adopting the Ohio Residential Code and declaring an emergency. I should say that the next three ordinances, 48, 49, and 50, are all somewhat related to the fact that we are engaging a new building inspector, but we'll take them one at a time. David?
Thank you, Mayor. This ordinance updates Section 150.01 of the Glendale Codified Ordinances, which was last amended in 2015, when the village adopted the 2015 International Residential Code. The state of Ohio standard is the Residential Code of Ohio, as opposed to the IRC. The IRC is a template or framework for a building code. The RCO is the actual building code that comes down to us from the state of Ohio. There was some, I reviewed the conversation back in 2015. There was some discussion about amendments and changes to that code. Any changes that, or adjustments that might be more fitting to the village should be performed through the zoning code. Be happy to address those or make those changes as we go through this process. But for the purposes of establishing minimum standards of building approval, the use of the Ohio Residential Code is recommended by myself, as well as NIC's inspectors, who will be permitting, doing permitting and plan review for the village.
And David, as you and I have discussed this before, it is the overwhelming number of Ohio municipalities also use the Ohio Residential Code.
Correct.
Do I have a motion for the ordinance?
Still moved.
Second.
And a motion dispensed with three reads?
Still moved. Second.
Okay, discussion.
Yes. I recall when in 2015, the International Code was adopted, and I questioned that, as did, I recall, Laura Abrams, the solicitor in 2016. I think that sometime in 2017, council adopted the Ohio Residential Code. And I'm not quite sure why this is needed at this particular time. So therefore, I'm going to abstain. I don't have that ordinance number, but I recall it vividly, because others on council had abstained for not having, for lack of familiarity with it at that time.
Was that the International Code when we instituted that one, which I think we have that now?
No, I'm speaking of the Ohio Residential Code, because it applies to one, two, and three family units.
If it was passed in 2017, it was not codified with American legal. So my, which publishes our final version of our ordinances. I don't know why it wasn't. For the sake of clarity and completion, we, I still recommend passing this ordinance in order to update the online codification, which is what is the final reference copy for these kinds of things. So if it was adopted in 2017, that may be the case, but I wasn't aware of any changes that were made in 2017 to the residential code.
The one we adopted in 2015 was the International Code.
Yes, it was.
Correct.
And in 2017, we made this change. I will go back through my files and dig it out, but in any event, it should be in the, it should show that ordinance being adopted. So I am in favor of updating our ordinances. But I'm just not in favor of, I'm going to abstain from re-adopting something that was already adopted. That's all.
I don't recall the, what we did in 2017, it might have been commercial, but.
Depending on council's patience, I can look, but.
No, it's not material right now.
Is there, is there urgency to doing this, to getting this resolved now, David?
There is, in the sense that we wanna have clarity on which code we're enforcing. Because if the online version of the code says that we're using the 2015 International Residential Code, that is the resource that folks will go to, to evaluate which ordinances have the village enforces. So if there is an ordinance that was passed in 2017 that wasn't codified, that's nice, to be blunt, but it doesn't, it's not reflected in our approved codified ordinances. So therefore, someone isn't going to identify it as the code that we follow.
I'm not quite sure, it's not reflected in our codified ordinances, that's what I'm saying.
I'm sorry.
It is not a, an emergency here. We do have an overlap with, until the middle of October, as I understand, when NIC is shadowing the current building official, is that correct?
NIC is working independently of our current building official, but they will, there is an overlap in the language of the ordinances.
So he is, they are shadowing our current building official.
I don't believe so.
No, they're not shadowing him, they're working independent of him.
We're using different words here, but we do have an overlap.
There is an overlap.
That's the point, that is the point. So I don't see this as an emergency for council to act on tonight, when we could act on this on October the 2nd.
And that's three weeks from now, and I think we probably could. I'm wondering, though, is your concern that we have already adopted the Ohio Residential Code in 2017?
Yes.
If that's so, then all we're doing here is, at worst, reiterating that we are adopting it.
And if we have not adopted it in 2017, then I think it gives us a bit more time to look at what we are adopting this evening, before it goes into effect. As I recall, that document was quite extensive, and many of us were not familiar with the contents of it, and wanted more time to look into it at that time, in 2017. So I don't see us rushing into adopting something that we've not had a chance to look into yet.
So your concern is maybe we didn't adopt the Ohio Residential Code in 2017?
If we did not, then we should look into this. If we did, then it's there. And it needs to be referenced as being adopted in 2017 and in effect.
Okay. If the, yeah, David, I mean, we're, what is the, are there any downsides to going to October 2nd on this?
I have a.
Let me just get David's.
No, there aren't. The NIC ordinances are written to be effective October 2nd. In fact, if they weren't, we could move more quickly for, I still fall back on for completeness and consistency that passing the code, if it is currently in place, then this is just a duplication of efforts. And if it's not, this is the recommended minimum building standards that the state of Ohio Board of Building Standards brings down on municipal building departments. So if there are concerns about the language in the code, any changes would need to go to the Board of Building Standards for review and approval. So those, that process would be a significant time for work to be completed.
I'm not even going there.
No, I understand what you're, I understand what you're saying.
My question is also, has our Planning Commission had a chance to look at this?
That really isn't their job, honestly, to look at building codes.
Building permits?
No, they do not do permits, they do not do building codes. But I'm with you on your idea of putting it off, giving, this is a big thing.
This is more than just one or two pieces of paper.
I think we will find that it is the commonly-used code in Ohio now. And, you know, we can be comfortable with it, but we've gotten along without it for a good long time. And an extra three weeks will, will not be bad. Do I have a motion to table this ordinance?
I'll move that motion to table this ordinance.
I'll second it.
All those in favor of tabling, say aye.
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 Okay, so, motion, 2023-48 is tabled.
Just to be clear, Mr. Mayor, is that the Planning Commission is concerned with zoning and appropriateness for renovation, correct?
Actually, the Planning Commission is concerned with historic preservation and the village plan. David there is our zoning administrator.
Okay.
He makes judgments on zoning, and the Planning Commission does not.
Okay.
And they also don't make judgments on building. And, and they also don't make judgments on building inspections or, or codes.
Build, building, building codes are the final step in, in an application that goes from, from zoning to planning to a building permit. So by the time it reaches this code, it has already gone through a zoning review, which is where I, again, suggested that any changes that council may like to see should be performed through the zoning code. Then the planning commission reviews historic appropriateness and other factors, and then the building code is where the building inspector comes in for technical review of plans and inspections of work.
Technical review, but I thought that zoning, did they not review driveway placement and recently? I mean, has it had something to do with zoning?
They do, they do as an exercise of...
They do have input.
They do that as an exercise for the, the placement of the driveway, but for instance, things like the thickness of the concrete or those sorts of details are not...
That's building code.
That's building code.
That's building code.
Correct.
And zoning, the planning commission also has jurisdiction in, say, in windows being replaced and windows required.
Right, for historic...
And we've heard about problems with windows here this evening.
Right.
So I, I just think we need to look into this. Not in terms of changing...
Understood.
The Ohio building code.
We are in violent agreement here.
Thank you.
Okay. Next ordinance, 2023-49. An ordinance amending Section 151.03 of the Glendale Codified Ordinances, adopting the Hamilton County Building Fee Schedule and declaring an emergency. David, can you give us some background here?
Thank you, Mayor. So as part of this packet of changes to the way that the building department functions for the village, I'm highly recommending, NIC highly recommends adoption of the Hamilton County Building Fee Schedule. The main purpose being that the village's current building fee schedule is based on the cost of construction, which is, in most cases, requires honesty and verification of materials used and other details related to the project that may or may not be the case when a contractor makes application for a building permit. The Hamilton County Fee Schedule is based on project type, so things like window replacements, re-roofs, structural alterations, those sorts of things, are judged based on square footage or linear foot or those similar measurements. Additionally, this updates our currently 20-year-old fee schedule. Fee schedule was last passed in 2005, based on my research. So I would highly recommend that we bring our fee schedule to match what is the going rate for building inspect, permitting and inspections. And NIC, as we'll get to in, in 2023-50, NIC's fees, NIC's charges are based on our building permit fee schedule. So they charge 90% of what is collected for a building permit, and then the 10% is used by the village for administrative costs. So that is the recommendation to adopt the Hamilton County 2023, or current Hamilton County Fee Schedule.
Do I have a motion for the ordinance?
Still moved.
Second.
Motion dispensed with three reads?
Still moved?
Second.
Okay, discussion?
I'm looking at the Hamilton County Fee Schedule, Schedule of Fees now, and David, is there a way to upload this information into our website or linkage so that people can see it?
Oh, absolutely. Oh, absolutely. The other benefit is that a lot of contractors are very familiar with this fee schedule. Can estimate their permit fees down to the penny.
Further discussion? Madam Clerk?
For ordinance 2023-49 to dispense with the three reads, Mr. Bessel.
Aye.
Ms. Duke.
Aye.
Ms. Mosenko.
Aye.
Mr. Baseman.
Aye.
Mr. Kreidler.
Aye.
Ms. Baldridge.
Aye.
For ordinance 2023-49, Mr. Bessel.
Aye.
Ms. Duke.
Aye.
Ms. Mosenko.
Aye.
Mr. Baseman.
Aye.
Mr. Kreidler.
Aye.
Ms. Baldridge.
Aye.
Thank you.
Ordnance, the motion carried, ordinance 2023-50, an ordinance appointing National Inspection Corporation, which is the NIC that you've heard referred to, and its designees as the building official for the village of Glendale, authorizing the village administrator to enter into an agreement with same and declaring an emergency. David, can you give us some background?
Thank you, Mayor. So as council is aware, NIC has been performing code enforcement and property maintenance, code enforcement for the village, I believe since May of this year. We're very pleased with their work. They're in the village very frequently, and we've, in my opinion, seen a lot of success on ongoing issues that were not tackled prior to them coming onboard. They additionally provide building inspection services that we do also currently contract. They offer residential, commercial, and electrical inspections as part of their, their service package. As I said earlier, building, their fees are based on 90% of building fees collected with 10% remaining with the village to cover administrative costs, effectively my time and Spencer's time in reviewing and issuing permits. The main benefit here is the collaboration between the property maintenance enforcement and the building department. The ability for an inspector who's in the village two to three times a week to see projects going on, verify that permits are in place, and follow up with those folks if permits are not, educate them about the process, and make sure that any work that's being done in the village gets us necessary permits and inspections. If there are any questions, recommend...
Get a motion on the table first. Do I have a motion for this ordinance?
Still moved.
Second.
And a motion dispensed with three reads?
Still moved.
Second.
Discussion.
I have a question regarding, is this a long-term agreement? Is this a, a better end agreement that can be canceled anytime?
The agreement, my understanding is initially a two-year agreement that renews annually from there on out.
And their fees are based, they, they receive 90% of whatever the fees?
Correct. So if they, if they issue a hundred dollar building permit, they bill us for $90 of that, that permit. As an example.
And, may I ask, they became associated with the village in May, I think you said, during NIC. How, how is that measured? How has that been measured in terms of effectiveness?
Well, it is, it is a, in some, in some instances, a subjective measure as far as the effectiveness of their, their work. I will say that as far as things like grass abatements and follow-ups on notices, they are more active than the village's previous code enforcement officer. In my opinion, I think we have opened up an opportunity for communication with our residents, with our inspector. His name is Doug. You might see his white SUV driving around. I believe that, that his work in the village is, is very, very beneficial to maintaining property codes and, and property maintenance. So I would say that they've been more active than previous, the previous code enforcement officer.
Will we have the continued expense of the current services?
I'm sorry?
Will NIC replace the current services totally?
For...
Building inspection?
Yes, yes. They, and that 90-10 split is the total cost to perform that work.
The cost being, currently being paid will be eliminated in terms of...
Correct. The, the net benef, the net impact to, because this is now running out of the general fund, the net, net benefit will, or the net impact, rather, will be positive. The village will, will effectively make a small amount of money, but it will be spent on staff time towards permitting.
Jeff, just to elaborate on the answer to your question about the term of the agreement. It's, it is in fact a two-year agreement. However, after the first year, either party may terminate on 90 days' notice. So that gives us a one-year evaluation period, gives us 90 days if we're, if one side or the other is unhappy, to find somebody else. So I think it's a pretty, a pretty reasonable termination clause.
Thank you, Don, for bringing that up. I also agree with the sign, the council package, the agreement is attached.
Further discussion?
You mentioned part of their package, including residential and electrical inspection. Could you say a little bit more about what that is?
So their, their work would be through, through the enforcement of the Residential Code of Ohio, which I, while we were, been talking, going back, I did review 2017 council minutes and found no reference to its passage.
I will, because the laws committee deliberated on that package, recommended adoption, and council so adopted. So there is history to it.
I did, I only looked in 2017, so if it was passed outside of that, I'm happy to...
Thank you.
To take that. They would enforce the Residential Code of Ohio, and they would also enforce the electrical codes as they exist within the Residential Code and the Ohio Building Code, which is currently in place for the village.
So this is something residents can request to have addressed?
So when a resident applies for, let's say we're putting, someone's putting an addition on their home, their contractor architect would draw up a set of plans. If they're in the historic district, those plans come to me for zoning review. Once those are approved on the zoning side, they go to the planning commission for historical appropriateness review. Then they would be handed to NIC that would review those plans for things like, you know, how, how far apart the wall studs are, and where the outlets are located, and how thick the drywall is, and those sorts of technical details under the residential code for enforcement.
David, doesn't that also cover, if Amy gets a new water heater installed, and you've got to have it inspected, this, this staff, this arrangement would, would cover that?
Correct.
The NIC?
HVAC, water heater, yeah, those kinds of projects.
And that's not limited to houses in the historic district?
Correct. That's any property.
Any house. And again, set the historic district aside. We understand there's special regulations for it, but houses which are putting homes, homeowners who are putting in new windows, new driveways, new roofs, would they, would this NIC inspect this?
It depends on the type of project. So for, if you flip back to Exhibit A in 2023-49, this is a very, actually a good example of what we're talking about. Under Section C of 151.03, there's a list of seven projects. Those projects only trigger what we refer to as a zoning permit. So that work is reviewed and, and issued, that permit is issued from the village office, does not require building code review. So you'll see number two is structural, non-structural window replacement, and number five is driveways. Now, for a re-roof, that will require a building permit, but non-structural window replacements and driveways just require that $40 zoning permit.
And what are non-structural window replacements?
I would say 99% of your window replacements, if, unless there's something, I, I can't think of an example at the time, but if we have anything that would be questionable, we would, of course, refer it to an inspector who would, who would verify whether or not it, it classifies as a structural window replacement.
That may come into play if you're expanding a window or you remove a window and put in a door.
Thank you.
Something like that. Something where you're changing the structure.
Of the house.
But if it's a direct replacement, I'm going to get Anderson windows and put them in, probably not inspect them.
Yeah. Okay. David, what did you say about roof, replacing a roof?
That would require a building permit.
Further discussion?
So to Ms. Duke's question and reference about the previous action, it did occur, it was ordinance 2018-04?
I'm so close.
Yeah, you were close. So it was the January, entitled, "An Ordinance Amending Section 50.01 and Enacting Sections 50.3 and 150.04 of the Codified Ordinances, Adopting the Residential Code of Ohio, Establishing Fees and Appeal Process and Declaring an Emergency." That's the verbiage from the...
And that was 2018-04?
04.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay. Do we have... No further discussion, Madam Clerk? Would you call the roll?
For ordinance 2023-50 to dispense with the three reads, Mr. Bessel.
Aye.
Ms. Duke.
Aye.
Ms. Mosenko.
Aye.
Mr. Baseman.
Aye.
Mr. Kreidler.
Aye.
Ms. Baldridge.
Aye.
For ordinance 2023-50, Mr. Bessel.
Aye.
Ms. Duke.
Aye.
Ms. Mosenko.
Aye.
Mr. Baseman.
Aye.
Mr. Kreidler.
Aye.
Ms. Baldridge.
Aye.
Thank you.
Return to ordinance, that's motion carried. Return to ordinance 2023-51, an ordinance awarding the contract for the Hedgerow and Albion Stormwater Drainage Improvements to Ford Development Corporation, lowest invest bidder, and as recommended by the village engineer, authorizing the village administrator to enter into a contract with same and declaring an emergency. Mr. Lomston?
Thank you, Mayor. So has, as has been discussed in the Streets Committee for...
Months.
Years, maybe?
Maybe.
Let's not say that too loudly. A significant amount of time is, we, we received bids on August 22nd for the Hedgerow-Albion Stormwater Drainage System Improvements. Very pleased with the number on those bids. We were expecting something in the $500,000 to $600,000 range, and Ford Development came in at $433, which is, in my opinion, tremendous news. This project will take, we don't have a firm timeline yet. This project will take some time to initiate, just given the scope of work, but recommending that we move forward with it and then go over the details at a future Streets Committee meeting, which I believe is scheduled for a little bit later this month.
Yes. Do I have a motion for the ordinance?
Still moved.
Second.
And a motion dispensed with three reads?
Still moved.
Second. Discussion.
Just a question. You, so if you were a betting person, is this something that you could see happening before the end of the year?
I would say work would, would begin before the end of the year.
Good, okay.
If I, if I'm incorrect, I will deny that.
Okay.
But I...
In spite of all of the record keeping that's going on tonight?
I believe that, I believe that yes, there will be some, some motion on this project before the end of the year.
Good, 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 good. Thank you.
Can, can we have a refresher on this project and how that interacts with the proposed retention pond?
Sure.
And the timeline?
Yeah. So this, this is the installation of concrete curbing along the western side of Hedgerow, which is the residential side, not Bethany's side of Hedgerow. It would go, it would begin at the end of Bethany's driveway, extending up towards Albion, with catch basins to be installed per engineer specifications and driveway locations. And then the installation of underground stormwater pipes along Hedgerow, and then turning down Albion, and then the restoration of catch basins, reconstruction of catch basins along Albion, and then eventually ending up in the creek that runs underneath Albion Avenue, which is, of course, going to be regulated by the construction of a retention pond in the greenbelt space. The design of that is still being discussed by, through the Streets Committee, so that will come up at our next meeting. But this is the, this is the improvement for residents on Hedgerow and Albion to collect that stormwater and, and move it away from, from those properties.
Question. David, as I recall, the Duke Energy Project that is ongoing in and around our village is still working on Albion. Do you have a sense of, do we have a timeframe for when they will conclude their work?
They have told me late September, mid, to mid-October is their timeframe, so they will be working. I don't anticipate that these two projects will, will intersect, but they are still working and they're, they're coming near the end of, of their timeline for work.
Specifically on Albion?
I don't know about Albion specifically, but the whole project, I've been told, mid to mid-October.
Well, that's something then that I think we'll look into through the Streets Committee because I can't see one project starting up and working on the same street, and this project is putting in, will be working on the south side of Albion.
Uh huh.
And as I recall, Duke Energy's equipment is still up and down Albion. We'll look into, we'll need to look into this. They were on Warwick Place again today, as well as Oak Avenue. So we do need to get a sense of when this Duke Energy Project is concluding as we look towards initiating these other capital improvements.
I, I, to that point, I would say that it is, it is incredibly unlikely that the two projects will intersect on the worksite. that the two projects will intersect on the worksite, just given the amount of time that mobilization will take for Ford to get working in the area, and by Duke's provided timeline.
I, I think the biggest interference is Bethany's work, working on her wall. That's, the majority of workers on Albion are doing that.
And do we know the timeline on that?
I don't have a firm timeline on that project, but I do believe they're trying to get that done by the end of the year. We'll revisit that, I assume at the Streets Committee meeting. I haven't heard an updated timeline from them, so I don't believe anything's changed.
We can get more information on that. Bethany has in fact invited us in the village.
Yes, they have.
To look over the work they're doing on there, and I commend that to anyone who, who is interested. Further discussion? Madam Clerk?
For ordinance 2023 dash 51, to dispense with the three reads, Mr. Bessel.
Aye.
Ms. Duke.
Aye.
Ms. Mosenko.
Aye.
Mr. Baseman.
Aye.
Mr. Kreidler.
Aye.
Ms. Baldridge.
Aye.
For ordinance 2023 dash 51, Mr. Bessel.
Aye.
Ms. Duke.
Aye.
Ms. Mosenko.
Aye.
Mr. Baseman.
Aye.
Mr. Kreidler.
Aye.
Ms. Baldridge.
Aye.
Thank you.
Motion carried, turn to ordinance 2023 dash 52, an ordinance authorizing the increase of the 2023 appropriations of the American Rescue Plan Act Fund and Village Plan and General Improvement Fund and declaring an emergency. Mr. Lumston.
Thank you, Mayor. As, as we discussed in ordinance 51, the project cost for this work will be split between the American Rescue Plan Act Fund, which is commonly referred to as ARPA, and the VPGI Fund. The American Rescue Plan Act Fund has some money that has already been appropriated to it, about a hundred and sixty thousand dollars. So the difference, the balance for that project will be coming out of the VPGI Fund, as outlined here in the ordinance. The small increase in the ARPA Fund is to make sure that all money available in that fund is appropriated for use, the goal being to drain that fund of any available resources in the completion of this project.
And this is the funding for the Hedro Albion?
Correct, yes.
Okay, do I have a motion for this ordinance?
So moved.
Second. And a motion dispensed with three reads.
So moved.
Second.
Uh, discussion?
So the funds listed here, is one of those, the ARPA that you're referencing?
Two twenty is ARPA.
Two twenty, okay.
And four oh four is VPGI.
All right, so that forty thousand is the last of ARPA for the Village of Glendale?
Correct.
Correct, all right.
But David, the ARPA has already been hit for. A lot of the engineering work that has been going on as part of this project has been, the ARPA Fund has been utilized for that. Any, any future work or unexpected costs or anything like that are gonna run through the state street funds that the village receives on an annual basis, which is almost four hundred thousand dollars in fund balance, so we're, we're plenty comfortable.
So we think the max hit to VPGI would be the two hundred sixty-five?
Correct, two hundred sixty-four, eight hundred.
Which is no small amount. Because that, that, that whole fund is, just a reminder, it's, it's going down, so. For the right reasons, for the right reasons.
So David, I'm looking at for a project that's costing four hundred and thirty-three thousand odd dollars, correct? And you said there is a hundred and sixty thousand dollars of ARPA funds available, correct?
Correct.
Okay, and so the balance is two hundred and seventy-three thousand dollars. Four hundred and thirty-three minus one sixty is two hundred and seventy-three thousand dollars. And you say this is coming out of where, VPGI and?
ARPA.
ARPA.
Mm-hmm. So there is, there is, a hundred and sixty is, is an estimate, I'm sorry, I don't have the exact number in front of me right now, but the total project cost will be handled by the appropriations that are, that are outlined in this ordinance. And, and previous, previously made appropriations back in December last year.
The four thirty-third, David, the four thirty-three. Already includes money that's some, some money that's been spent already.
No, the four thirty-three is the total project cost for the, for the construction work.
Okay, because, so four thirty-three minus the two sixty-five, I'm rounding. For VPGI, minus forty-one for ARPA. The balance, I thought the balance was already, of, of that difference, there's still an outstanding balance, so I thought that was from ARPA.
Yes, that is, that is previously appropriated within the ARPA Fund.
Okay.
Further discussion? Madam Clerk?
For ordinance 2023 dash 52, to dispense with the three reads, Mr. Bessel.
Aye.
Ms. Duke.
Aye.
Ms. Mosenko.
Aye.
Mr. Baseman.
Aye.
Mr. Kreidler.
Aye.
Ms. Baldridge.
Aye.
For ordinance 2023 dash 52, Mr. Bessel.
Aye.
Ms. Duke.
Aye.
Ms. Mosenko.
Aye.
Mr. Baseman.
Aye.
Mr. Kreidler.
Aye.
Ms. Baldridge.
Aye.
Thank you.
Motion carried, ordinance 2023 dash 53, an ordinance authorizing assessments on certain properties in the Village of Glendale for removal of grass and noxious weeds and declaring an emergency. Mr. Lumston.
Thank you, Mayor. This ordinance covers assessments for removal of grass and weeds from a property in the village. The abatement came after several notices posted on the property and mailed by regular mail and certified mail to the property owner listed. So the, the ordinance, or I'm sorry, the invoice for those services went unpaid and is now ready to be assessed to the property taxes for the, for the property.
Do I have a motion for the ordinance?
So moved.
Second.
And a motion dispensed with three reads.
So moved.
Second. Discussion?
I, I have a question. Is, is this a result of NIC activity?
It is. Every, every, every abatement assessment ordinance for grasses, NIC at work.
It's more frequent than it used to be.
Yes, yes.
Certainly is.
Further discussion? Madam Clerk?
For ordinance 2023 dash 53, to dispense with the three reads, Mr. Bessel.
Aye.
Ms. Duke.
Aye.
Ms. Mosenko.
Aye.
Mr. Baseman.
Aye.
Mr. Kreidler.
Aye.
Ms. Baldridge.
Aye.
For ordinance 2023 dash 53, Mr. Bessel.
Aye.
Ms. Duke.
No.
Ms. Mosenko.
Aye.
Mr. Baseman.
Aye.
Mr. Kreidler.
Aye.
Ms. Baldridge.
Aye.
Thank you.
Motion carried. That concludes our re-business, and return to reports from the mayor, village administrator.
I have a question, Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
In light of the clerk's finding on the ordinance 2018 dash oh four, should we circle back to 2023-48?
Is there an appetite to do that?
Good, good question.
So moved.
I have no appetite to do it tonight. I think we can wait until, until October the second, when we look at this.
Was this ordinance, though, the same substance, was it not passed in 2018?
Well, that's what we don't know.
I would have to go back and look, looking at the minutes, it looks like there were some changes that were made to 150.03 and 150.04, which the ordinance does not seek to amend.
Okay.
And in my opinion, the language in 2023-48 is simpler than the language in 2018-04.
Okay.
And for the purposes of clean enforcement and consistency sake, I prefer the clean language.
Okay.
If, if I could express that opinion.
Well, I think what you told me, David, is that the Ohio Residence, Residential Code, we cannot amend that in any way.
We can amend it, the.
In our zoning code.
Correct, amendment, amendments can be made, they do need to go through the Board of Building Standards, it's a rigorous, rigorous process. We should amend it through the zoning code.
Okay, and I agree, if there are inconsistencies with, with what was done in 2018, then I agree, we let this sit until next meeting.
Correct, that'd be my recommendation.
All right, thanks, Don. Okay. Turning to mayor's report, no births or deaths were reported. I'm going to just warn you, this is not gonna be a short mayor's report, a lot went on in the village.
Did we not have a birth to report?
No, we did, you have the information. I didn't get a chance to forward it, I'm sorry.
We have a birth, yay.
Well, it happened just before the last meeting, did it not?
In July, yes.
Time flies when you're having fun. Brooks Daniel, from Maggie, Mike Vogley?
Vogley.
Vogley, born on seven twenty-four.
Okay. Thanks, David.
Thank you. So we consider that the official recognition of that birth here, and they are free to come and seek a baby tree. As they desire. There were no deaths? Right, okay, good. So turning to, as I was starting to say, there was a lot going on in the village, and I want to acknowledge it, so people are aware of it. We had the Shakespeare of the Park in, in, in the park, a play, comedy of errors, and it was held Sunday, September third. The performance had been scheduled for July twenty-eighth, however, it was beastly hot on that night. And, you know, out of consideration for the actors, who were ready to go on, I'm told, the, the director said, no, you are not going on. So the, while I would not say it was cool on the night of September third, it was nevertheless much more pleasant, and we all enjoyed the, the play. I want to thank, once, as every year, Cynthia Beishel and others and Harry Whiting Brown for making this annual event happen. This last Saturday, there was a concert, Broadway to the Park, by Kyle Everland, with Betsy Harden and Chelsea Cavender accompanying him. And it was very well received, the good, the good crowd was there, I think they were figuring out about a hundred, hundred and fifty. And it's a good thing, because it raised some money for our Christmas in, in the village, that will come up later in the year, of course. Thanks to the Village Wines and Hammond Meats for helping out with organization and for their low or no-cost donations. This coming Saturday, September sixteenth, there are gonna be two events on, with Harry Whiting Brown again. One through the library, part of Harry Whiting Brown, there will be a book sale and a craft fair. Craft fair and yard sale, all on the September sixteenth, from nine to five. And, you know, I have that in the wrong order, because actually, on Wednesday, September thirteenth, at seven o'clock, the Glendale Library will present An Evening with Beth Kelly, who many of us know from all the Facebook pictures she posts of these poor little animals that she finds and somehow nurses back to health, and what a beautiful thing it is. On Saturday, September twenty-third, there will be the street, the street fair is going to return. I don't have a lot of details on that, but keep your eyes on the village newsletter, and it will be coming. I'm just going to do a couple of quick hold that date announcements. October fifth, at seven o'clock, there will be a town hall meeting for the strategic plan, which has been in the works for a while, and now we're going public with it. It's been public all along, because all the meetings have been in public. But this one, we will be looking for guidance, suggestions from, from the public. So that's October fifth, at seven o'clock upstairs here in Town Hall. And another hold the date announcement, on Monday, October twenty-third, seven o'clock to eight-thirty, there will be a candidates forum for the election, November elections. And this will just be for the elected offices in the Village of Glendale. So I hope all residents will, will make an effort to get out and for that event. I'm just gonna add one more thing here. We do not engage with a number of residents when they are speaking before us. First, we feel it is their opportunity to speak their mind. And second, in some cases, we have found that it just gets tied up in a long, pointless discussion. So, but I do want to say, confirm the advice, the letter, very clear letter, that our solicitor wrote to one of our commenters here, that a records request, a question, a request to have someone, a village employee appear, is not a records request. Records must be in some recorded format, on paper, or in some other permanent format. They are not a question and, opportunity for question and answer. The question of why the police and fire chiefs appear and not some others, they have a different status, they report directly to me. The other employees report to Mr. Lumston, who is able to represent them, if he sees fit, to make, to make any comments. But the truth of the matter is, on any matters that residents want information on, they are welcome to submit questions, or call us, or talk to us, or whatever they want to do, to, to get the answers to their questions. So that is just why that even though the letter was there, even though the letter was very clear, this particular resident still made the request. With that, I'm going to turn it over to our village administrator for his report.
Thank you, Mayor. To reiterate the mayor's point, and I believe I said this at the last meeting as well, is I am Kevin Bell's supervisor, so if there are questions about Kevin's performance or the safety or function of the utility, I encourage them. I have absolutely no doubts about our water safety, our water quality, and find it frustrating that the, that these comments continue. But understand that, that is their right to do so, so continue to embrace them and embrace questions whenever they may come up. Our annual water quality reports are published on our website, you can go back, I believe, as far as 2020 or 2019, and see those reports. Additionally, we are closing the village.
Sorry.
We're, we're closing the village office this Thursday and Friday, not for a public records training, but rather for a training on the UAN software system. All of the village staff to enhance cross-training will be participating in that training, which necessitates closing the office. I'll be available by email, if folks have comments or anything like calls or questions, encourage them to contact our police department non-emergency number. Additionally, it just assists with us going through that training uninterrupted, and making sure that we learn the ins and outs of the new accounting software that we will be using. Goal is to begin on October the first with using the new software, and looking forward to a lot of streamlined changes to the way that we, we do our accounting business in the village. So it's a good, good, successful thing. The state auditors have completed their in-office work, to the best of our knowledge. We don't have a firm timeline for the draft audit report, but that will be circulated to council, as well as, I would assume, dates for an upcoming post-audit conference, which we may, council members may recall, we had in 2021 as well. In additional development to that, the village has requested, and I will stress again, requested, not been told, not been commanded, not been required, to participate in a single-year audit for 2023. The reason for that is to verify the changes that we are making to our financial systems, our accounting softwares, those sorts of things. Verify those changes, and come back with a clean, hopefully clean audit report that confirms that those changes are appropriate and in the best interest of the village. That will take place next summer, just as this one took place this summer. Then finally, the water meter installation is, has, has gone very, very well. About nine, specifically, nine hundred and twenty-nine meters have been installed throughout the village, which is just shy of ninety percent of the meters. What remains are meters that are either, homes that are either off because they are vacant, as well as a number of larger meters that are in supply chain, they're just not yet in stock for the garage. We anticipate that this project will be complete by the end of the October billing this year. So we will have about ninety percent of our meters for the October billing, and then a hundred percent for the January billing. So very successful in my mind in eliminating a lot of that door-to-door and manual reading of our, of our old water meters. If there are any questions, concludes my report.
Question, who will be conducting the training on, on September fourteenth and fifteenth?
A representative from the state of Ohio, it's a virtual training.
A representative from which state of Ohio's office?
The local government services, which oversees the administration of UAN.
Okay, thank you.
I had a question regarding the software for the new meters.
Yes.
You're facing UAN software and new meter software at the same time. Will the billing be automated for the reading occurring at the end of this month?
Yes.
So that will be, those who have the application on their cellphone will be able to use it?
We're going to be putting out information, hope to have that launched by the end of September at the absolute latest. Thank you for asking because I did forget to mention, we are planning on hosting, we don't have a date yet, another open house similar to what we did at the beginning of the year for the new bill formats and the online billing and open house to train folks on how that meter tracking software works, how to get signed up and how to use it. So that should, for customers with the new meter, which is about ninety percent of the village, they'll be able to see that information based on their October bill. And then we'll follow up with the remaining customers for the January bill.
So David, I'm sorry. I just want to be clear in my mind, local government services is a consulting arm of the auditor of the state of Ohio. Alright, so it is under their, under the auditor's auspices that this training is being performed.
UAN is auditor of state software.
Alright, so that's why I wanted to clarify that. We're not having staff trained by a consultant that is not affiliated with or in sync with the state auditor's office.
Correct, this is, this is a UAN trainer. This is their bread and butter and their responsibility and they are a state employee.
Thank you.
One other point on the meters, to clarify for residents, and that is, in the past, in our old system, your meter was not necessarily read on the same day of the month. So effective with the new meters, everyone will be read on the same day?
That is the goal, yes.
Typically?
Typically, yes. We will have, I can't promise same hour, but I can promise same day, which is a pretty massive improvement in my mind. So there might be outliers if meters don't report or whatever the case may be, but most meters will be the same day.
And we will attempt then to bill it on the same day, plus or minus each month or each quarter.
Correct.
Yeah, okay, so that's a big plus for.
Very big.
Many people who are getting bills they don't understand that might be for thirty-three days versus, or twenty-nine days.
Correct. And then the other, the other thing I will add is, and we're of course happy to walk folks through this, the October bill, because of the new meter switch and because we are going from cubic feet to gallons, the October bill for, I would say, all customers might look a little strange. It has catch-up charges for the old meter and then the charges for the new meter. It will appear odd, but it is accurate and we'll be happy to walk anyone through how we got to those charges on the bill. But then going forward, the bills will look like they do with very clear and concise information.
Can you explain that catch-up charge?
Sure.
Jeff, thank you, I'm sorry.
So. So if your, if your meter was, let's say your meter was replaced halfway through the billing quarter, we collect your reading at that point of, at the time of replacement. That reading is calculated back from the previous billing. So that is your usage on the old meter. Then from that point forward is your usage on the new meter. So our billing software combines those and it will appear as two different charges, but it does total your total usage for the quarter.
Okay, got it, thank you.
And you put a notice about this out ahead of time?
As best we can.
Observe some of the confusion, okay?
Yeah, yeah. I'm done.
Okay.
One more question, how will we know that the meters are being read? Is there, now that they're, it's a remote wireless read, is there, how is, how are they being read?
Kind of like Duke.
Just that date.
They, they, they read every fifteen minutes and they transmit data four times a day. So we will be able to see where, specifically when those meters were read, as well as any gaps in the transmissions that might come out. And that information will be available to customers through their app, through the app connected to the meter.
Will there ever be people coming out to look at the, you know?
I sure hope not.
The new things and the.
If we do have an issue with a meter, it's not reporting, not reading, we will come out, take a look at it. But no, the beauty of these meters is that they can be set to go for fifteen, twenty years and we don't have to think about them.
I'm just wondering, some of them do tend to collect debris, leaves and dirt and that, and they often had to scrape them and clean them before reading them every three months. So is that an issue at all with?
No, because the new.
Getting lost.
The new meters, especially if they're outdoors, or if they are outdoors, have an antenna that is attached to the meter itself that connects to the lid of the pit. Now that antenna functions as, like a cellphone and it gets its signal out. So leaves, dirt, debris, those aren't going to, those aren't going to contain that signal. So it will be able to read regardless of how buried the meter is.
If you put your lawnmower on top of it, that's going to be a problem.
If you put a lead blanket over it, that'll get in the way.
No, lawnmower would be a problem.
We will, but we will get a notification that that meter hasn't read in a day or so and then come back out to.
The meter actually has no legible meter on it.
No, it does. Yes, it has a small digital screen. And if it doesn't transmit, because we're into these details, if it doesn't transmit, it actually retains about forty days' worth of data until it can again. So we won't even have a gap in our data.
Wow.
Everything you wanted to know.
Yes, and more.
Much more.
Okay, Madam Clerk, would you call the committee reports?
Finance Committee, please.
The Finance Committee did not meet mainly because we're having trouble getting all the cats heard, the cats herded. With the audit going on, it's probably just as well we did not meet. We will try to set up a meeting for sometime in October. I think this month just is not going to work with some of the travel schedules I'm aware of. The only thing regarding finance, the key thing I wanted to point out was David has scheduled an audit for next year, which will be critical when you transition from one accounting system to another. So typically we do semi-annual, I think annual is wise in this case.
Yes, we will return to a two-year, we'll return to a two-year cycle after this one-year audit.
I will get back into trying to schedule a meeting though offline via email.
Thank you, Fire Committee, please.
Fire Committee met on September 7th, the minutes are online. Couple of things that we covered, going back to the risk assessment program that's underway. Pretty, pretty interesting review of the village properties focusing on the clearance of water stand pipes and alarm systems and things like that. This, this work is just beginning on risk assessment. The strategic planning process within the department was addressed and it is in, is in progress. And we talked about a number of potential new programs to further enhance community involvement. And then we heard of a rather fascinating proposal by the Assistant Chief to, to address the deteriorating condition of about a hundred and seventy-five hydrants in the village. It's a, it's a neat proposal that's going to be reviewed and if it, if it takes place, it'll be in joint with the utilities operation. But we could finally start to address some of those really, really ugly looking hydrants along your street. Anyway, that's about the top of that and I want to turn it over to Dr. Yetter.
Thank you ma'am. That was a very informative, detailed meeting by all and thank them for coming. I'm very short with what I have to report on. We did receive a grant from Firehouse Subs for three thermal imaging cameras. That costs seven thousand six hundred and ninety-nine dollars, we have received them. That grant total is twenty-three thousand oh ninety-seven. Just to let the council know that we got those for nothing, that's that grant that we applied for.
Firehouse Subs.
We have been applying for those for years with them and it finally came through. The other thing I want to report to the council was years ago, we had an Explorer program and it kind of went to the wayside. We've reactivated that, everyone's gone through the training. We now have nine Explorers. There's some pretty tough rules with that, but the fact that they are now participating, which is actually developing a farm club for the fire department, so that's where we're at there. We are meeting again this Saturday for the strategic planning. We're looking at existing stuff under the SWOT analysis, but I also want to go into a pest analysis and bring the items. I've already sent it out to all of them, what we're going to discuss. This whole purpose of this plan is to plan forward for one, three and five years and look at not only funding, but the services that we should be looking at for the future. That's all I have to report.
Thank you, Laws and Claims, please.
Laws and Claims did not meet, we are scheduled to meet on Thursday, September 28th, ten to eleven Thursday. And I'd like to thank everyone for responding promptly and I'll email David to put the notice out.
Thank you, Police Committee, please.
Police Committee did not meet in August, so here's Chief Walsh.
Thank you. Everybody should have a copy of my Police Committee report that was sent out. Some other things that happened, over the weekend, we had a rash of cars being entered by two gentlemen, one adult, one juvenile. Officer Barnell, earlier in the evening, had contact with both of these subjects. Unbeknownst to him, what they were planning to do. We believe he caught them in the beginning of what they were starting to do. But based on Officer Barnell's stopping these two guys and getting their names, date of births and addresses and everything, on Saturday, after he reviewed the video, he was able to determine these were the two gentlemen that actually took some keys out of a residence. And based on that, we were able to track him down and with the help of his mom, we were able to get the keys back. And the residence resident doesn't wish charges at this time. So he got a, got a huge break there. Also, we have entered into a contest with Light Ohio Blue. We entered a picture of our cruiser taken with the backdrop being the nine-eleven, nine-one-one railroad engine. That contest opened up today. So if you go to Ohio, Light Ohio Blue photo contest, we are category five. We'd appreciate any votes we can get to see how we can do in this contest. I believe there's at least one more in our category.
What was that category again?
Category five.
We'll be, we'll put a link in the newsletter on Friday.
And last but not least, a shout out to Officer Dila Williams. As of today, this is his thirty-eighth year with the village of Glendale, his anniversary is today. So thirty-eight years with the village of Glendale.
So, Mr. Mayor, can I ask a question? What does he get for thirty-eight years, other than an atta boy?
We'll get him, we'll get him something special for that. The shout, the shout-out I just gave, we'll get him something nice.
Thank you.
Oh, man.
That's not in the minutes. Public Buildings and Historic Preservation, please.
Public Buildings did not meet last month. David, can you check with Tom and see if we can wait till November? Or does he need to go?
No, we don't, I don't think we have anything pressing.
We usually do it before Thanksgiving, so.
Yeah, we'll, we'll have one in preparation for budget season. I don't see anything on the horizon.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Recreation and Playgrounds, please.
We did not meet in the past month and also David, whenever you, Tom, think it's time though, we can talk budget.
Thank you, Streets, Public Improvements and Lights.
The Streets Committee did not meet last month. We have a meeting scheduled for the nineteenth of this month, that's a Tuesday. We will be reviewing a little further the work to be done on Hedgeron Albion. And we'll also look more at the retention-detention pond on Oak Road. Bids came back for a pond that were extremely high compared to what our expectations were. And we have to now think about how can we get the same functionality that will complement all the other work we have to do there in a more cost-effective manner, which could mean that we're back to detention, which is not a pond, it would just fill and drain back off. It's not potentially as aesthetically pleasing, does not add an amenity that we thought would be nice over there, a pond. But the cost could be less than half of what was proposed. The area now, currently, when a storm comes with excessive water, does fill up with water and within a day or two drains back off. We would just be expanding its capacity to hold more water to control the flow into the creek, same as we would with a pond. But again, we're thinking that the cost to do it that way is going to be much less. We just have to compare the two and see where we are. Regarding timing, the project for the storm sewer system is months in duration. I believe that the retention or detention, whatever is decided, once it's started, is weeks in duration. So they will be able to catch up to each other and complement each other to help solve that water issue over there. So come to the meeting, there'll be a lot more information there. We have no pricing or costing information yet for alternative methods of controlling that water on Oak. However, there is a design laid out that will be shared at that meeting. Are there any questions prior to?
So what time on the nineteenth?
Nineteenth at four o'clock. Just, you know, very happy that the bids came back lower than anticipated for the, the storm system work on Hedgeron Albion. So thanks David for guiding that. That's it for Streets. Oh, and we'll also take up the mayor's suggestion, I'll be in touch with Chip on putting together a committee. We had a blue ribbon committee that repainted and refitted all of the street lights, what, five years ago? And I think we can.
GHP project.
GHP project, okay, with a blue ribbon group that did it. And I think we can do it again, if there's more energy to do it again, let's, let's get that started.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you, Utilities Committee, please.
Utilities Committee did not meet. And I think the progress in utilities and well coverage this evening was the discussion about the meter installation and software. And we plan to meet early October.
Thank you. Turning to reports from the Clerk and Treasurer, Adam Cook, Anthony Report.
I do, earlier in the month, we had, or at the very end of August, we had a meeting with a member from Envision, the Strategic Planning Committee, to talk about reporting. And, you know, what are the different various levels of reporting that other municipalities do around here to get an idea of who gets to see everything at the absolute minute level versus a higher level reporting. So we're going to try and look at that as part of the strategic plan work to make sure everybody's informed appropriately and not buried in the details. That's it.
Thank you, Mr. Treasurer.
Everyone should have received the summary for the month of August and we're on track to. and we're on track to meet our commitments for the year.
Thank you. We turn now to financial reports. We have received the July twenty-twenty-three financial reports from, just on our expense, revenues and expenses. And the check register from Huntington for our, for our expenses. Do I have a motion to acknowledge the receipt of these reports?
So move.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. And given no further items on our agenda, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. David.